Meeting is called to order at 7:01 PM. Please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
Pledge. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Appointment of clerk pro tem. It is recommended action that Nancy Bradstreet be appointed as clerk pro tem for the November 27th, 2018 meeting. May I have a motion and a second that Nancy Bradstreet be appointed clerk pro tem for the November 27th, 2018 Board of Education meeting?
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed. Thank you. And thank you Nancy. All right. May I have a motion? Excuse me. You may have a motion and a second that the agenda of November 27th, 2018 be approved as submitted.
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed. Thank you. May I have a motion and a second for the approval? Oh my goodness, I'm so confused tonight. Okay. A motion and a second for approval of minutes of November 6th, 2018 as submitted, acceptance of recommendations from the Committee on Special Education, acceptance of recommendations from the Committee on Preschool Special Education, acceptance of recommendations from the Superintendent for Personnel Changes, approval of request to dispose of unserviceable textbooks. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed. Thank you. No treasurers report tonight? Special reports? All right.
So we have one special report this evening and that is our school action plans. Last board meeting, we heard from our four elementary principals and this evening, we're going to hear from our secondary schools. So Mr. Buddington, our Bay Trail principal. And is everybody coming up or just?
Everybody.
Oh, okay. Then come on up there.
They come up as they work.
Oh.
They're going to rotate through different sections.
We rehearse this.
Oh wow. Okay. Well, this is very exciting. So our high school principal, Dr. Maloney, is out. She's on a maternity leave after adopting a beautiful baby boy. And so in her place, so the board's aware in the community, is that we have Ms. Terry Febré and Ms. Marsh and Mr. Rudes, Ms. Sick and Mr. Howard Hennick, who will be here to present on behalf of the high school's school action plan. And you guys have a well-oiled machine, so I think you're ready to go.
So we appreciate the opportunity to update the board and the Penfield community about what our focus is for this school year. Starting with the district goals, and you've heard this from us before, but one of the things we greatly appreciate from the board's work is keeping these goals consistent. And that allows us, as we work with staff in the buildings, to continue on the work that we do in the same direction and really start to see some of that work take hold, especially as we look at that part of that first statement on academic achievement about the development of the whole student. That really has become the district focus. It's become the focus at both the middle school and the high school. And I know you heard from our elementary colleagues at the previous board meeting, having these goals consistent helps really make this work impact the students instead of changing direction every so often. So we greatly appreciate that. Along that line at Bay Trail, with focusing on the development of the whole student, we're looking at what we do consistently and purposefully to help students feel safe and welcomed at Bay Trail. So that no matter which house they're in, no matter which grade they're in, they're having that positive experience. We're looking at the work, the feedback we got from the Children's Institute, from the surveys they did last year that were shared at opening day. We're working with Dr. Ginsburg's work on resiliency. We've taken faculty meetings and flipped them so that three faculty meetings throughout the year were providing professional development opportunities for staff to choose, focused on mindfulness, anxiety, resiliency, and also technology. So we're continuing our work with technology, but it gives staff the opportunity to continue their approach for what they feel they need. And those faculty meetings and the other faculty meetings, we have our whole group. So we're differentiating the faculty meetings to support staff. It also helps staff to continue to get their professional learning credit because those meetings really become professional development. With our approach with the student achievement, we're working with the Core Six program, which is Essential Strategies. And they were started at the high school last year by Shane Waterson and Sheena Conway, two of our TOSAs. And they shared them with us at Bay Trail in the spring and the staff. And we've made that part of our approach with staff in our grade level meetings that we have throughout the year. So we're also building into our work with the staff, those instructional conversations. For many staff, it's a refresher of what they've already known or what they've done. But it's a good refresher and we can talk about it collectively across a grade level. What does it look like in English, Math, Science, and Social Studies when you focus on inductive thinking? What does that look like in each of those? How do you teach it? And we're having those conversations. And that's led by our TOSAs, so we appreciate their work as well. And then looking at, what do we do when students don't know it? How do we continue to refine our response to intervention program? Looking at, what are the results are we seeing? Are we seeing students improve from the way we have the intervention programs designed and how we provide those supports? Are there ways we can tweak that? Because every year, the students are different. We get, as things change and curriculum has changed from the elementary, we get students coming up with different skills, stronger skills in some areas. And that causes us to continually look at the programs of supports that we have and how do we help our students still become the best that they can be within that safe learning environment.
At this time, we'll have Terry Febré and Terry Marsh come up and they'll touch on the development of the whole student and collaborative approach to student achievement. Let's use you up first.
Hi, I'm Terry. One of the assistant principals at the high school. And I have to discuss the development of the whole student, specifically how we've educated our students, staff, and parents on social, emotional strategies and support. For our students and staffs, we brought in NAMI, which is an organization focusing on mental illness, to speak to our students and staff on that topic. We also brought in Renaissance House, Katie DeSalvo, our Delphi counselor, and Sheriff Mike Favada to speak about addiction in our student seminars. And tomorrow, we'll have a speaker on drinking and driving, and it will also be a lesson on resilience for the entire school. The Out Alliance spoke to our students on LGBTQ issues, and the faculty was invited to attend those seminars and they could receive professional development credit if they did. They will be returning to our January faculty meeting for another professional development opportunity for the entire staff.
That's great.
Last year, we did the DOT project from Ginsburg to help us identify students who didn't feel connected to any adult in the building. This year, Ken Ginsburg spoke to our staff about dealing with students who've experienced trauma. The Rochester Regional Health was brought in to provide counseling for students both at the high school and in a clinical setting. And last year, there were some evening programs, like for example, there was the Teen Angst Panel. That was a community evening program. And tomorrow, we'll actually be conducting another evening program for the community. We restructured our student seminars so that on one week, they would meet in larger groups with their administrator, and then on the opposite week, they would meet in much smaller groups with their counselors. Smaller groups gives the counselors the opportunity to get to know their students better. We also focus some of our seminar topics on mental health and resilience strategies, like for example, Ginsburg's Seven Seas of Resilience. Some of our teachers have been trained in mindfulness and they share that information with their students and with their colleagues. And we've begun to train our administrators on restorative justice. And over the summer, our counselors revised our prevention and intervention strategies along with our health and safety assessment. And this was shared with various staff members in our building. We've done other things to address the whole student and some of those will be discussed by my colleagues in the sections later on, on partnerships. Do you want to sit here?
Sure. So, we continue to have a collaborative approach to our student achievement. The continued implementation of the benchmark assessment cycle. Our directors are doing a great job of working with our teachers to work on aligning units, aligning skills, and having those common assessments. And we are in the progress of various stages of implementation, from quarterly to some of our departments are now, every unit, they have a benchmark assessment. So lots of great work there. We've redesigned our academic support center to be the Academic Success Center. And we've really tried to take the whole idea of the whole student to mind in this setting because it's for our kids that need some extra support in many ways. So some of the changes for this year, we have students, when they come in every period, they fill out a brief survey. It's literally, "How are you feeling today and what do you need to work on?" And the "how are you feeling" is key because we're asking kids to start to realize where are they at and what do they need for their learning. And we have a mindfulness corner. So if they're having a really cruddy day, they could take a second, regroup, and then get to their learning. We have students work on whatever they are identifying, or we have teachers that are staffed in there, at least one teacher and one TA, to help them with what they need or to help them identify what they need, looking at some of their grade reports. And then at the end of each period, they do a very quick reflection, what did they work on? How did they do? And the teacher also does that so the kids can start to see, am I really working and getting the full potential out of this opportunity? At the end of every five-week period, students are also looking at their grades. What have they been working on? What do they need to focus on more? And assessing, is this, do they need to continue in the ASC or do they need something different? Have they learned what they need? And do they have the skills to move on to something different? Some additional just things that I wanted to mention though, we do also have extended testing center hours, which has been a great addition. We are open until 3:10 for students who need additional testing or have missed a test or quiz. They can go after school so it doesn't disrupt their day, which is a great opportunity, as well as we've added academic study halls for students in grades 10 through 12. So if they need extra push to do that work and homework, we can assign them in there. It's a quiet space. And also kids that just want a quiet opportunity to do homework. Thanks.
With the goal number two focusing on partnerships, at Bay Trail, we're in the middle. We have students coming into us from the elementary and we have students transitioning to the high school. As we have our focus on the whole student, we've really looked at that communication in those transition areas and how are we sharing information and how are we getting information about the student, about the whole student, not just their academic performance in those transitions. So we continue to work on those partnerships with our elementary colleagues and our high school colleagues. We visit the fifth grade classrooms to review students for math placement in the spring. Our reading teachers, visit with the elementary reading teachers to talk about transition. Our special ed administrator chairs our Five Go Six CSEs. We have those regular conversations. I talk with the elementary principals about any major behavioral concerns so that we're prepared to support students as they come into Bay Trail. Similarly, with our eighth graders transitioning to the high school, we had a conversation today about eighth grade course selection. For those of you out there in the community, that's coming up. So parents can put on their calendar, I believe it's the January 9th, I think, for the parent meeting at the high school, about Eight Go Nine Transition. So we're having, how do we help our students make our recommendations for the high school courses? The high school counselors come over at the end of January during Regents Week and meet with the eighth graders individually to help them select their high school courses. We also have teams from the high school come over later in the spring and meet with our support teams in the houses and talk about students and student concerns so that we're really sharing that whole student information so that the high school can be prepared to support the students that are leaving us and coming to the high school in the same way that we can work to support the students coming in from the elementary school. Partnerships with parents and students continue to be important and focus in looking at, how are we communicating with parents? Are we getting parents the information that they need, that they're looking for? One of the times I get a lot of feedback was it from parents, especially this year, was at Open House because we're looking at, is that, is the format we used helping getting parents the information they need? And we've had conversations with PTA, our partnership with the Bay Trail PTA. And SEPTA are key in sharing that information to making sure that we're supporting students. Our PTA is looking at starting a conversation around cellphone use. And we're looking at, what do we need to, how can we help parents in partnership with the PTA understand technology, understand cell phones? And what should that be as students come into Bay Trail and transition through Bay Trail? And is what we have right now, the right approach? So we're having those conversations as part of that partnership. And that was a conversation that was really initiated by the parents at PTA. But it's a conversation we need to have because it's a reality that parents are dealing with and that we're dealing with at school. And the more we can be aligned with that approach and all be informed about it, the better off we're going to be able to support the students.
Dr. Rudes. Dr. Rudes will talk about partnerships across Penfield Central School District, then Michelle Sim will talk with partnerships within the community.
Good evening. In terms of the K-12 partnerships, homecoming has kind of truly become a community event. We worked really hard this past year to involve as much of the elementary schools with the themes, with our carnival. And it's great to see all the Twitter feeds of all the different events going on during that time. We continue to offer scholarships to seniors with the assistance of the elementary schools as well as Bay Trail. We still have the graduate parade. It was an honor to be a part of that. And I think the elementary schools and the kids, it's a great experience for them to be able to slap hands with the seniors as well as celebrate that day as well. And we've increased staff attendance at graduation. It's really become less about it becoming a high school benchmark and it's been more about a K-12 because they're all of our students. So embracing that Team Penfield mindset. In terms of our Bay Trail partnerships, we continue to host the eighth grade orientation to help parents as well as the students have a successful and inviting transition into the high school. We also have collaborative meetings in the spring between the house principals and assistant principals, counselors, to talk about helping all of the students and identifying students that might have more challenges than others and identifying supports for them. And we also initiate the Five Oh Four and IEP meetings in the spring as well to address our special needs population.
In addition, I'm going to talk to the partnerships across Penfield Central School District. I'm talking about the partnerships with the community. We believe that we want to welcome in the expertise of the outside organizations and agencies. We know that we can't possibly know or have all the expertise, so we welcome that as we have a collaborative approach with meetings, with parents, and also with seminars. Some of the agencies that we use to support the social, emotional aspect for students includes the NAMI Agency, which is National Association for Mental Health Illness. Rochester Regional Health Partnership, which we are allowed to do direct referrals from the counselors and the county agencies. We also work with them. And private counselors. Continuing to implement the sources of strength here at Penfield High School. Working with U of R to develop the proactive measures so that students maintain a stable social, emotional, positive, you know, outlook on life. And then we also have participation with the Student Summit on Race. And along with that, we do the Urban Suburban Partnership. We are continuing to have the interviews and welcome new ninth graders into Penfield High School. Furthermore, we continue to do the Alternative Education Program with Gananda at their high school, where we offer an all ed program for certain students that will benefit from that setting. And then a few other things in addition include the Delphi. We have a full-time Delphi counselor as well as an intern that works here. We have the Resource Fair, partnerships with Monroe County sheriffs. Just today, two sheriffs walked the building. It was really positive to watch them interact with the students. They're getting very comfortable with them walking throughout the building. The Out Alliance, they come into the seminars along with the NAMI and so on. Bavona will be meeting with our faculty for the upcoming faculty meeting. They're going to be doing a professional development, talking about what to look for with students that may have been abused, how to approach it, the do's and don'ts, what to ask, what not to ask, who to turn to as you need to reach out to get more support for those students. And then finally, the YMCA connection that we have, they're offering a great discount for our students, also working with our physical education department and building those connections so that some of our students, especially the students in the special ed population, are able to go over there and do some of their PE right there in the setting for free.
Excellent. And the third goal is fiscal responsibility. Mr. Hennick?
Ongoing review of building an instructional budget, sufficiency and focus on instructional needs for the students. I'm just kind of wondering why I was given this one, but I guess it's because of money. And they know that sometimes I try to keep a very close eye on the money for, at the high school. Continued reviewing of staffing, supply, procurement, and maximizing state aid available for professional development, textbooks, and supporting the arts. And electronic communications when practical and possible. Really, in closing for the high school part, Dr. Maloney is an excellent leader, but now that she's not going to be with us for the next 12 weeks, we're not just going to stay afloat. The goal is to continue to move forward. We have a goal. We have midterms coming with Regents and then we have AP exams. We have, and then final Regents in June. We're moving forward and we welcome her back. And Chris Sloan, the interim principal, is a great support. But the team has a goal and our goal is to move the school forward and that's what we intend to do in her absence.
Do you have a closing message?
No. The fiscal goals are combined. We really share those goals, so that's a combined goal statement. Although I will say to my Bay Trail colleagues that are here, I kind of like this format of having the APs talk, so maybe we can think about that in the future.
Like that.
Okay. Board members, any questions or comments? Barb?
Oh.
No, you looked like you were ready. I wanted to invite you.
Okay, thank you. Of course, I have something to say because it always is such a breath of fresh air to hear all the wonderful things that are happening for our students at both Bay Trail and at the high school. But especially in light of everything that is now our focus, and it's wellness. And I think you all captured, and I was able to get your message, that we are looking for everybody's welfare as well as the staff. It was nice to hear that the staff gets professional development for doing all these things because that's part of it. And so, kudos. Thank you.
And just to add to that Barb, a lot of the work around wellness starts with the staff in looking at their own wellness and making sure that they're taking care of themselves. And they understand that perspective, that the students are going to be better academically if we focus on that first.
Right. It seems to me to jump off of that is, Howard, what you were just saying about the team being in place in Leslie's absence. I mean, that's great teamwork and when you can, when somebody is out of their actual role and everything can move forward, that says a lot about how everybody has worked really hard to bring that whole Team Penfield thing into not just an idea, but the way things are done. And that's very impressive. And it's good to hear. And the other thing I wanted to mention, Michelle, you were saying about all of the high school community partnerships. That's something I always, I'm always impressed with what everybody does. But every time I hear about those partnerships and those other ways in which community organizations reach out to us, and we do in return, I think it makes, it just helps make the whole district shine on its own, but then become part of such a great community. And it's everybody's efforts and it's really, it's coming to fruition. I think it's wonderful. And then I must compliment you on the report tonight. I'm always amazed at the amount of work, the amount of thought, and then coming out tonight and giving us the presentation. I bet you there might have been other things you might have preferred to do.
No, this is where we want to be.
Oh, okay. Well, that's Team Penfield, right? But that's nice to hear, but we do appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to share that I do appreciate you guys coming out. It's an incredible team at the high school of assistant principals working together and with Howard, our associate principal. You know, thank you for filling in tonight, but also because it's the work not just of the principal. As Wynton will share, he has a couple of his assistant principals here. To go on note, two are missing, so you can go back and share that I noticed that. I'm sure they had, I'm sure they had something very. But I just want to say, I appreciate the work that you guys are doing around the action plan. We had the elementary principals here. And if you remember, you can see that presentation grow over the years, that they really present together. And you can tell from this presentation, again, there's so much that's being shared between the partnerships and fiscal responsibility and even the academic focus, both at Bay Trail and the high school. So thank you very much for coming out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night. Okay. Visitor speaking time. Is Krista the only one? Okay. Krista, come on forward. You know, you know our routine when we have visitors. It's nice to see you again.
Nice to be seen.
Well, I think because you're here, I think I might know what time of year it is.
It is. Amazing to think a year's gone by. So yes, I'm here to formally invite the board as well as the community to the Penfield SEPTA Book Fair at Barnes &amp; Noble in Webster on this Saturday, December 1st. We'll be there 9 till probably 9. And for anybody that doesn't know, we've hit up all the Penfield School librarians and asked for their wish list. We're going to purchase books on various disability and special education topics with part of the money. And then the remainder of the money raised goes towards funding scholarships for high school seniors. So as, we try to sort of each year top what we did the year before and it's getting harder and harder, you know? Hopefully, we have managed to do that, but we can include the storytimes again. We have music from all four of our elementary buildings. So I think this might be a first, that we've had all four elementary buildings represented as far as music. We've added a little twist this year as far as the Bay Trail and the high school. We've got the book fair barista bowl competition. So there's a list of ingredients, Starbucks ingredients, that each school has, and each school is going to create a drink and create some enthusiasm because as far as whoever buys the most of that particular drink on Saturday will win a prize. Not quite sure what that is. It's a surprise to me at this point because we haven't quite figured that part out, but it will be something of some sort. And we'll again have our friendly competition between the elementary buildings. I think Indy in the landing is up on two or three years in a row having won. So they have dethroned Harris Hill. So we'll see. It's anybody's game this year. And we've got lots of authors coming this year. So we do have five different authors coming. Larissa Giuliano, and she's got a book called How to Build an Elf Trap. So she's going to talk a little bit about that. We'll have activities set up around that for the kiddos. Jackie Jaeger is coming. Melissa Ostrom.
Don't know her.
Scott Petoniac is coming. He's actually got a, his first ever kid's book he's going to talk about. And Dave Chisholm is a gentleman who is a musician, but also a graphic, a graphic novel writer. So he's going to come and hopefully do a little bit of book signing and also a little bit of performing. And then Dr. Putnam will do an interview this year with a real live person. So again, it's a full, it's a full day of Penfield community fun. And again, what's really kind of neat when we have these meetings with Webster, Barnes &amp; Noble, you know, I hear from all the employees, it's like their favorite day of the year. We also have the pet therapist coming back. And again, they sort of echo that same sentiment, that this is one of their favorite events. So just, you know, putting the, you know, the invitation out there to the entire community. Barnes &amp; Noble has changed. that same sentiment, that this is one of their favorite events. So, just, you know, putting the, you know, the invitation out there to the entire community. Barnes &amp; Noble has changed their percentages as far as the proceeds of voucher sales. So, this is the last year that we'll get 20% of voucher sales. After this year, it'll go down to 10%. So, it'll be a discussion among our group, you know, if we, if we continue to do it, you know, given that proceeds are basically going to be cut in half. So, not to say this will be the last one, but there's a possibility. But we'd like to, if it is, you know, go out strong. So, everybody is invited. And I will, I'll pass the flyers. Hopefully, they're up in all buildings and district office. And the way it works, if you don't have a voucher, that's okay. Just when you're at the register, register purchasing lots and lots of stuff, just say you're with the Penfield Book Fair, and you're good to go, and voucher sales will count towards our sales.
Okay.
Questions?
Yes, board members? No?
What time is Dr. Putnam?
I think we're noon-ish, right?
Yeah, I believe I'm interviewing a real live human, because two years ago, it was a dog I interviewed.
Right, right.
Then I interviewed Susan B. Anthony.
Last year.
Yep, so, just not living.
Right, right. She's a real person.
No, it was Susan B. Anthony. So, I'm very excited, and...
Who are you interviewing?
Actually, what I, my suggestion was going to be for you to interview Larissa Giuliano. Maybe you could find out a little bit about that, you know, building Elf Trap.
I've already started my research.
Okay.
So, that's who I thought I was interviewing. I do have, my interviews are hard hitting. I, you know, a lot of questions about the Elf Trap.
He's on the case.
It's a great book. So, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Krista.
Very welcome.
Okay. Okay. Levia, it's your turn. Hi.
Hello. Okay. So, the past few weeks at Harris Hill, they had an, they had a, fifth graders had a firsthand experience with Judge Elliott on their field trip to the Hall of Justice. Harris Hill will hold Annie Junior performances for this weekend, with all grade levels being treated to a sneak peek on Friday during school. And they will continue to hold their annual holiday show assemblies, which are scheduled for December 3rd, with performances from all grade levels. At Cobbles, in preparation for the holidays, students made turkey hats and colored in turkey signs. The school is holding the Scholastic Book Fair tonight alongside a game night during, in the library. And at Indian Landing, the buddies from 4th grade helped the kindergartners graph weather data and solve weather problems. At Scribner, students rehearsed and practiced very hard, putting on a wonderful show of Peter Pan this past weekend. At Bay Trail, 8th graders in Home and Careers baked various flavored pies, just in time to bring home for Thanksgiving. And they are able, this whole week, they're able to participate in various activities, like writing notes to people in the military during lunch in, for the Mix It Up and Make a Difference days. At Penfield High Schools, the drama club and the production crew worked very long and hard hours after school, preparing for their play Twelve Angry Men, which was also very successful last weekend. Items were collected by various clubs until Thanksgiving break and donated to the Penfield Accumatical Food Shelf. Students were able to meet and listen to a veteran who was present at the, who fought in the Battle of the Bulge. And students tomorrow, actually, will attend an educational meeting regarding distracted and drunk driving. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Board members, any questions or comments? Yes, Phil?
The Cobbles has the book fair tonight, and one of the reasons why they're having the games, which I found out, is to make it so that the parents can do a little Christmas shopping after the kids, give them their ideas of the books and stuff they want. So, it was really, whoever came up with that was really, that was appreciated by my wife tonight. She had all three of the kids.
Nice.
Yeah, yeah. Well, the kids would be doing the game night, and she gets to do a little shopping with it, yeah, with the books that are there.
That's a cute idea.
Yeah, very helpful.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Levia. All right, superintendents reports.
All right. So, this evening, we have a few superintendent reports. I just have several student and staff honors, an enrollment report by Dr. Sansucci, as well as our final review and look at the goals, assumptions, and guidelines. And then I'll turn it over to Mr. Pfeiffer for instructional data summary. And speaking of Mr. Pfeiffer, my first exciting piece of news is that we had Major Glenn Dodge, a World War II veteran and great-grandfather to some awesome Penfield patriots. He was at the high school prior to Thanksgiving, discussing the Battle of the Bulge with PHS students. It was really an amazing opportunity to get to go over and, and listen to him, and then meet him afterwards. I decided to put this photo in with his, with his granddaughter, grandson, Mr. Pfeiffer, and, or grandfather, you have grandfather-in-law, right? And then a couple of the Pfeiffer children there. And it was really great. I actually have my picture taken with him, but I thought this one was much more attractive than mine. But really, just an amazing piece. And we talked about partnerships. This is one of those opportunities. We do have a trip going over to Europe in one of the breaks to really look at, part of that is to go over to look at the World War II trip over one of the breaks. And, you know, so his knowledge is, was really wonderful. And, you know, I left there, and I mentioned it to Jim and to others, that we had H21, the new room upstairs that's been redone, was completely, was standing room only. And to listen to our student questions, when it was just open forum questions, just respectful, really insightful, really interested in what his, what his responses were. And it really gave me a lot of pride, one, obviously, to have this amazing World War II vet here, but also really proud of our students. The board would have been incredibly, just really honored for the type of questions our students asked, and the respect that our veterans deserve, and our high school students showed Major Glenn Dodge. I thought it was amazing. So, thanks, Jim, for working here and sharing your grandfather-in-law with us. Appreciate it.
That's wonderful.
Actually, just to follow up, you, Levia always steals my thunder, which I appreciate. But just the PHS food drive, really cool this year, just because Student Council, Leo's, Key Club, Environmental Club, all joined forces to conduct this holiday food drive for the Penfield Food Shelf. And I just think that's really cool, when you see multiple clubs coming together, instead of competing for, you know, fundraising ideas, and just a really great idea of so many students coming together for that. Also mentioned is, the high school mentioned this, that Thursday is PHS Prevention Day. There's assemblies during the day for students, and then there's an evening resource fair. It's still not too late to sign up. Every parent K-12 received an email about this to come out and hear about mental health, substance abuse, and much more. And that's from 5:30 to 8 on tomorrow night, on Wednesday. I think I said Thursday. I apologize. It's tomorrow night. And, what's that? There's just one thing you need to sign up for. If, one of the things they're doing is something called in plain sight, and that's brought in by Delphi. They had a partnership beyond just Delphi Rise. And it's, it really is set up as a teenager's bedroom on wheels, and they, parents can actually walk through it. And what's in the room is actually references to drugs and alcohol that you might not pick up on, because they're, they're sort of those hidden references that, as a parent, we, I used to think I was really hip and cool, but I realized pretty quickly that I don't even understand any of the Fortnite conversations taking place in my house anymore. So, it's a very sort of interactive opportunity. That one, there's spots available. I think there's 25. There's two, they're doing two sessions. The other ones, there was a sign-up opportunity simply so they could get numbers, so they would know how many people are coming. But if you just need to show up, that's, I'm sure they'll make room for you. And Terry Marsh was here earlier, one of the assistant principals, and just wanted to sort of give Terry Marsh and Katie DeSalvo a shout-out, because they coordinated this whole event. And it was a lot of work that they put into it, a lot of partnerships, and a lot of people they're bringing in. So, it's nice to see that teamwork. And that wraps up my updates, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Sansucci for enrollment review and projections.
Thank you. I have two quick presentations that I'd like to begin with, will talk about enrollment review.
We'll review enrollment, and then the second presentation tonight will be just a review and what's changed since our last meeting with regard to our board, budget goals, assumptions, and guidelines. So, with regard to enrollment, we always begin with where we did. And you'll recall, when we took a quick look at this a couple months ago, right after the start of school, our projections were exactly accurate. And you know that can't stand. So, what you see tonight is, is slightly different. Not really substantively, but slightly different, because we, for our purposes, we've always standardized in our enrollment projections around Beds Day, a day in October, when the state collects on a statewide basis, information about staffing, about enrollments, and so on. And we've always felt like that's the day, if you're going to drive your stake in the ground for enrollments that change every day in our buildings, that provides some consistency and allows a reference point. So, what you'll notice is we, our projection last year of this year's enrollment was about, was 54,005.84. As of Beds Day, we were 5,0558. So, that was a projection of about a 45 student increase. And it decreased. We were exactly 45, you'll remember, on opening day. And over the course of those couple months, we decreased by about 26 students. So, it's, I think it's sort of interesting. It's actually a great example of how fluid the enrollments necessarily can be. We still grew at the kindergarten level, slightly less than we projected at grades 1 through 5, and then really sprinkled across the other schools. But what's buried in this, and what you can see if you look through the more detailed enrollment projections that are in your package, is gradually, we're having larger and larger incoming kindergarten class sizes. Those are going to be, continue to work their way through the system. We've had the experience, and we know, while we wait for our eventual classroom additions project to happen over the next couple of years, that we're awfully tight at the elementary school. And you can see why. We're just, the incoming class sizes, we were in the 280 range for a number of years, and now this last year, we enrolled 338 in kindergarten. So, that, that's going to continue through the course of time. So, overall, we always like to look back, just as a dipstick of how we're doing. So, in 2013, when we projected where we would be this year, so five years into the future, we thought we would be at 4351. And instead, we're at, we're quite a bit bigger than that. We're at 4558, about 95% accurate, about the same throughout the grade levels. But in fact, larger than we thought we would be five years ago. So, looking forward, the projection for next year is for an incoming kindergarten class of almost exactly the same size. So, this is, you'll remember, based on birth rate, on births, on births five-year previous. And for those two years, they're similar, and when you carry the model forward, sort of the changes in births, the changes in the, in the formulas that are used, all just sort of offset. And we end up with a projection for next year's incoming kindergarten class of a very similar number for this year. The bigger class will continue to move through grades 1 through 5, so we'll see some growth there. And then really, just the changes across. Class sizes do change as they move through the system, but not dramatically. And so, those other changes at 6 through 8 and 9 through 12 are about what you'd expect. So, overall, slightly less than 1% increase, about 0.8% of an increase, but we continue to grow. And over time, 1% a year, our projection is that this will continue, and that five years into the future, will be about 5% bigger than we are now. So, that's a summary of where we're at with enrollment. You have, as you know, a much more detailed enrollment report that talks about everything from students in public, non-public schools, to homeschooled students and so forth. If there's any questions about any of that, I'd be happy to ask them. But that's the summary for enrollment.
Board members?
Okay.
Thank you. In terms of budget planning and our goals, really just want to talk tonight about what's changed from the last presentation. So, at the board meeting, at our last board meeting, we spent quite some time going through the important features of the goals document. Tonight, I just want to touch briefly on what's changed, and sort of emphasize a few of the key features, because in tonight's agenda is the adoption of it, as we move closer and closer to beginning the nuts and bolts of our budget process. So, where we're at with regard to that, is we've, we've established that calendar. We've had an audit report that talked about how we did last year, sort of where we were. And we've reviewed our goals. We'll continue that tonight. The next meeting will be the last piece of planning, where we talk about our tax cap update, some budget forecasting, talk about reserves. And then after that, beginning in January, the first meeting in January, we'll begin putting the budget together itself. So, what's changed? I changed the slide on enrollment growth a little bit, because it, we reviewed the, I've already mentioned this in the enrollment presentation, this changed just slightly. Where, and, but we do still expect to grow by 35 students going into next year. Growth's going to continue to be concentrated at the elementary levels, and we will grow by approximately 5%. We know some new things. The tax-based growth factor has been released by the state of New York, by the Department of Equalization and Assessment. So, that 0.77 represents, in Penfield, in the Penfield School District, the amount of growth in new bricks and mortar in the community. So, not reassessments, not they change the value of your home. That's new bricks and new construction, just under 1%, 0.77. That's actually, it's fairly robust for us. It's under 1%, but as you can see, our two, our two highest over the course of the tax cap were only a little bit higher, 1.12% and just over 1%. So, we now know, we don't know the rate of inflation yet, because we're not final, but it would take, I think it's virtually mathematically impossible at this point, with the remaining amount of the year, for it to be, for the tax cap to be anything but 2%. So, the, the rate of inflation will continue to bounce around, but it's been steadily over 2%. It would have to go to zero and significantly negative, and I don't, I just, it's not going to happen. I think we'll finish the year with a rate over 2. That will mean that our allowable levy growth will be fixed at 2%. So, that'll be the second year for that. Two years, two years when we started this tax cap process, then inflation cooled, the economy slowed down, we've been under 2%. Now, we're back into that model again, where it truly does function as a cap, the rate of inflation that drives all of our costs, is going, you know, the tax cap doesn't control that. It just controls what we can raise in terms of revenue on the tax levy. So, it'll be fixed at 2, while our costs increase something more than that. This slide then, of course, just recaps that, and, and points out that last year, by the time we worked through all of the various moving parts of that tax cap, our actual maximum levy was 2.75. We adopted under the tax cap at 2.61. For this year, I think that we will, there's still some work to be done with regard to pilot payments, a few things unsettled. But we'll be working to finalize that over the course of the next few weeks. And I believe that by the time we're all said and done, that we will be close to 3% for a tax cap for this year. Not necessarily where we'll end up in terms of a levy increase, but I do think that with 2%, our carryover changes in pilots, that will be around the 3% potential increase level. In terms of other changes, the one thing we spent some time talking about was potential political changes that might impact the school. One of those was that the, we were, we were having that conversation on the day of the vote, on Election Day, two weeks ago. And control, the one thing in the wind was would control of the United States, of the New York State Senate shift, and it did. We now have new senate leadership. We have a new senate majority, a Democratic majority, for the first time in a very long time. So, it's, the Democrats briefly held the senate, what, 10 or 15 years ago? And prior to that, it was decades before that had happened. So, that will bring change. We're not sure exactly how that's going to impact upstate suburbs. We're not sure exactly how that's going to impact upstate suburbs. There's a, there's a significant and important presence of suburban Democrats from Long Island who have similar interests essentially as upstate suburban areas. But we don't know what that mix will, how that will work. It's, this is sort of uncharted territory in terms of the politics of the New York State Legislature. So we know that the Assembly is very heavily dominated by New York City and by the big five interests. So we'll, we'll have to see what that looks like. We just don't know how, what changes that'll bring, or how fast those changes will happen. So whether this budget cycle or a future, future one. So it just injects a bit of uncertainty, I guess, into the process. Oops, wrong button. Since our last meeting, the teachers' retirement system has announced their rates. I think we talked a little bit about they were expected to decline, and they did decline slightly. They've not released the final rate, but they've released guidance that it should be somewhere between eight and a half and nine and a half percent. That's down from ten-point-six-two percent this year. So slightly declining TRS rates based on the performance of the stock market, frankly. That's, it's outperformed the seven percent expected rate of return. The bad years are falling out of their five-year average. So there, it's, it's a good year in terms of declining TRS rates. So we'll see declining TRS and ERS rates, health insurance increasing by the majority, for the majority of our employees by about one percent. So some good news on, on some very key areas of our budget there. We bring all this to you and we have this conversation because of our focus on long-range planning. We, I bring it back around to that because that's been key to sort of our success in terms of budget management over the course of the years. We intend to continue that. It's why we begin this process with planning. You know, we begin our budget process talking about the future, about enrollments, about what might change in our environment, about what we need to be aware of it. It's all part of that, fitting together that long-range plan where we attempt to craft a budget that balances the needs of the community, of our students, of our staff, while recognizing and minimizing the impact on taxpayers. So that's my, my brief summary of where, of what's changed. Just to remind everybody where we're going, at the, again, at the next board meeting, we'll, we'll talk tax cap and budget forecasting. We'll begin in January, the, the hard work of the budget itself, instructional presentations through January, capital in February. The, the regular education program will be reviewed at the second February meeting, BOSEs in March. And then really, by March twenty-second, we need to be complete. And so at that March twenty-second meeting, we will consider the entire budget. We'll review the, where we're at for the entire budget because we need to adopt, approve and adopt at the April twenty-third meeting in order to make all of our advertising deadlines to be able to vote on May twenty-first. So the public hearing, the last public hearing of the, of the cycle, the required three-part hearing is on, is scheduled for May seventh. So, and of course, I, the vote itself in the high school, as it always has been, from six to nine on May twenty-first. Are there any questions?
Board members? No?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Turn it over to Mr. Piper.
Thank you. Before we begin the instructional data summary, just to go back to Grandpa Dodge's visit, we did record it. And I just need to work, I need to touch base with Mr. Porto back there behind the scenes at some point to extract the video from my phone and ask that we have one of our student workers who are semi-professionals in videography and editing clean it up a little bit. And then I'll work with Sharon to put it back up on the board sharepoint so that site is still active. So with the technology that we have, we'll be able to make it accessible so you can, you can see the discussion that was had and really see how, you know, Tom bragging about our students, but really, they were excellent. So it'll be great for the board to be able to see that. And if we can make it more publicly shareable, I'd be happy to do that as well because I think it's a, it's a piece of history that not everybody gets to see and partake in. So I do have a question too for the board. As I was looking in board docs at the attachment to this portion of the agenda, I only see the executive summary. Did the board receive the full instructional data report that has all the region's trend data? No, okay. We'll make sure we get that, I think, just between, I was gone last week for a little bit, and then with Sharon not being available, we might have just missed getting that document to you. But you will get that document. And if you have any questions, maybe we can do that through board questions in preparation for the next meeting. The action plans? So maybe those PDFs didn't, didn't get sent out. But we'll make sure we.
No, they were on here.
All right. We'll make sure that we get the, the full data summary report to you. And then if there's any questions, if you want, we can do it maybe in preparation for, in board questions for the next meeting. But hopefully, it should be pretty clear. So this way. All right. So we always start with district statistics. Remember, this is going back to the last school year. So we're a little bit behind schedule and out of our sync normally. I would like to try and do this before we get into the action planning presentations, but with the embargoes on data, we're just not able to do that at this point. So we're a little behind, but we'll get there. And I see that I have a very poorly placed comma there as well. But we continue to have about thirty-one thousand folks here within the district boundaries of the total enrollment, around that four thousand five hundred. I needed to eliminate something there.
Moving off on my enrollment projection.
Maybe. We're growing more rapidly than Dr. Sanzuzi's projecting.
Ten times what he said.
Whoops. We really need those twelve extra classrooms. With about four hundred and thirty-eight professional staff supported by four hundred and seventy-seven folks as well. So we always like to focus on our, on our mission statement. And again, as, as we heard from the principals, keeping this information consistent really allows us to be focused and continue our work moving forward. The first goal last year was the same as it is this year, providing that safe, engaging learning environment, promoting growth toward academic achievement and excellence, as well as the development of the whole student. What does that look like? How do we make those decisions at the district level? When we look at, you know, considering that model of student achievement, you know, not just academic achievement, but also that social emotional achievement, starting with our standards, developing our curriculum, going into instruction, assessing our progress, looking at that data, determining through our evaluations and our observations of our instructional staff, as well as the assessment results, what professional development do we need? Doing that, and that cycle continues year after year after year from the district level. At the school level, we're looking at those different pieces and looking at real-time data, looking at being preventative and proactive in the classroom and in our, within our schools, but being responsive, using evidence-based, research-based strategies to respond to students and provide instruction. And also looking at screening and progress monitoring when we do need to intervene to ensure adequate progress for our students. In the classroom, our teachers are planning the instruction based on that guaranteed and viable curricula. They may be using different research and evidence-based instructional strategies depending on where their students are in order to get them to the desired outcomes. But they'll implement those lesson plans, those instructional plans, continue to formatively and summatively assess student progress, and evaluate the results of those assessments and look at where their kids are, and then take the necessary steps to make the next set of plans in order to continue to move our students forward. Some recognitions from the seventeen-eighteen school year. These are not new to the board. I compile these thanks to Nancy's work. She always keeps a list, and I'm able to pull them back from the board presentations as we go through and bring them into a summary. But again, Penfield High School being in Newsweek Magazine's List of America's Best High Schools, the entire district being, again, the best community for Mugisk education, all of our elementary, all of our schools being highly ranked by Business First based on test scores. Again, one measure, not the only measure, but it's, it's an accolade, so we'll take it. Again, Penfield High School was a reward school for New York State. And again, we're celebrated in that way because of our highest levels of achievement with no gaps for our subpopulations. And I think a big one, again, is as you look at our graduation rate. Ninety-seven percent of our students received a region's diploma or higher, seventy-eight percent advanced designation, and twenty-eight percent advanced designation with honors. It's outstanding that our students are leaving our building, our high school, with such high achievement and high honors. In addition to that, our kids continue, and you'll see this in a slide with a graphic, but continue to outperform New York State when it comes to nationally normed tests of the SAT and ACT. So we know we're preparing them for success beyond high school when we can look at these results. And individual honors for our students, that one hundred and twenty-seven seniors and graduates named AP Scholars is just outstanding when you look at that. I mean, when we're graduating approximately three hundred and fifty kids, give or take, and one hundred and twenty-seven of them are earning these types of honors. It's really an outstanding accolade for our district and for our kids to earn that. And more, just keep continuing to have it happen. So getting into, like, just looking at the trends of some of those results, again, here, you're looking all the way back to two thousand and twelve in terms of our comparative ACT composite scores consistently outperforming the state. So it's, that's really excellent. And then again, same with our SAT results overall. And just looking back, that wasn't a dip unnecessarily in our overall scores when you see that sharp line drop. Similarly, we had the conversations about comparing results from this year's, or last year's three-through-eight scores to the year before. There's a change in the format of the test. There is the little note down at the bottom that they went back to the scores out of twelve-hundred versus twenty-four-hundred where they had been for a while. And again, looking at our trend of diploma types, and this is something that I go back to often, and then the board has been very supportive in talking about sweeping changes that are put upon us by the State Education Department. And this is one of the things that I will consistently go back to is, is look at our graduation rates. When you're thinking about sweeping changes, always keep in mind our graduation rates and how we're able to help kids be successful and prepare them for whatever the appropriate next step is when they leave Penfield, be it post-secondary education, training, directly due to employment, military, whatever it is. We're making sure we're getting a vast majority of our kids ready consistently over time. So when we look at the data, we're stable. I mean, when you see the region's results in the report that we'll get to you in the next coming days, very stable in that regard as well. Those, and comparatively to our component districts, the ten components of Monroe and BOSEs, those results are very positive. And our kids are performing at a very high level on those summative measures across the board. We're going to take a look at a couple of slides here at why you're seeing some same steps, though. There's changes coming, as we talked about last meeting during the gag presentation as well. We're going to go into those a little bit more. But we still have work to do at the high school level, especially where there's changes to region's exams around developing our guaranteed and viable curricula, making sure our assessment system is monitoring student progress along that journey, making sure we're staying current with our research and evidence-based instructional strategies and beginning to weave in those SEL practices as well. That's a big focus in this year already, and it will be for the next, for the next several years. And as you heard, the high school in Bay Trail talking about continuing to refine that system of interventions for academics and behavior so that we're supporting our students and giving them the support that they need to be successful. So those are the things that we're going to do. We'll continue to take those steps to make sure that our kids are ready to be successful, not only in assessments, but when they leave our walls as well. So our goal this year, as the board knows, is the same goal that we had last year. Our goal number one, we'll continue to work toward that. But these are the things that are coming, beginning really this spring. And this is a bit of a review, but I think it's good for the, for the board and for the public to hear this again. Will be computer-based testing for math three-through-eight and ELA six-through-eight this year. We'll be outsourcing scoring again to bring back that instructional time. We'll have a new Global History and Regions Two exam, Regions exam this spring already. So the implementation of that C-three framework that we started talking about three-plus years ago, now we're getting into those new regions exams in that regard. And a new U.S. History Regions exam the following year. We'll be beginning, as we talked about, transition exams in science and moving that, that science exam from fourth to fifth grade, but also in eighth grade, also in living environment and earth science, beginning in two thousand and twenty-one. And then new, completely new exams the following year. And then we'll also then begin rolling changes to chemistry and physics. And then the new exams in living environment and earth science. And then finally, new chemistry and physics Regents exams all the way out to two thousand and twenty-four. So when we talk about that, why do we still need to build guaranteed and viable curriculum? We said this wasn't initiative anymore. Well, as these assessments are changing, we're going to have to change as well. We're going to have to adjust that curriculum, keep that practice moving forward to ensure that our students are ready. And by the time we get done with all of that, I'm sure there'll be more changes for us to continue to work on. So it'll be, it'll be coming. And I tweaked this graphic a little bit because I didn't want to have a wall in my pantheon as someone informed me that it had looked like. So I tweaked this a little bit as we weave in the social, emotional, health, and well-being of our students in with the insured focus on learning and ensure that we are supporting our students in that way. Because if we are doing that, I think we all firmly believe in our committed to the fact that they will continue to shine and even show even more academic progress and achievement as we make sure they're taking, our students are taken care of in that way, as well as our staff.
Board members, any questions? Mark?
Yeah, can you go back to the previous slide for a minute? I, you know, in hearing the updates earlier in the meeting, I just, you just, I got to thinking about the evolution that's, just in my few years on the board, that seems to have taken place, where if you look at this and the way you have those columns scaled. You know, you could say, maybe when I started, it was even more extreme where the, where the knowledge-based columns were very large and the, and the growth and development columns were very small. And I would say today, it's probably those are fifty-fifty. And I think we've evolved to the point where education is more than just the knowledge transfer. It is that, that growth and development of the student. And when we talk about the whole student. But I think we see it more and more in the amount of time we spend talking about things that are not directly knowledge transfer, but more the whole student. So, you know, it really is interesting to see how this has evolved over the past, you know, five, six years.
And it's, it really has. It has changed a lot. And I was thinking, as, as hearing the presentations as well, you know, we used to think about the work of Marzano and others who said that the most successful schools, and, and that definition of success truly being simply results, right? Was a laser, is what they used to call a laser-like focus on student learning. And, and what we know is that when we do that, we neglect that whole student, that whole child perspective. And we need to, we need to be able to ensure that we're, we're looking at both and addressing both and focusing on both at the same time. I almost equate it to, you know, a baseball player where, while, while the batter has to focus on the ball as it's coming out, they also have to be aware of where the defensive players are in the field in order to find the gaps. You can't, if you only focus on one thing, then you lose context. And, and that's, you know, where we've, we've swung back from. The pendulum has swung this other way. And I appreciate the fact that the board is taking notice of that as well.
Nice. Any other questions or comments for Jim? All right, thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
That concludes superintendent reports for this evening.
Okay, thank you. Why does that always?
I went to sleep.
Okay.
No, I just went to sleep. I haven't seen too long.
All right. Change orders. Okay, we are on item five on the agenda. All right, we have lists on the agenda of, actually, it's not lists. It's just two change orders here for the Capitol Project for two thousand and sixteen. That is all written out on the agenda. And let's see. So the above change orders have been reviewed by and are supported by architect Vic Thomaselli, project manager Gary Hoffman, clerk of the works Alan McNiff, and deputy superintendent for business and finance Mark Sanzuzi. May I have a motion in a second that the change orders as described above on the agenda be approved? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed? Thank you. Tuition agreement with Rochester City School District. Penfield Central School District has been a participating member of the Urban Suburban Transfer Program since its inception in nineteen sixty-five. The purpose of this program is to voluntarily decrease racial isolation, deconcentrate poverty, and enhance opportunities for students in the Rochester City School District and in the suburban districts of the greater Rochester area. In order to accomplish this mission, pupils residing in participating districts may apply for transfer from the Rochester City School District to suburban school districts or from suburban districts to the Rochester City School District through the program. A Penfield student has applied for and been accepted for attendance in the Rochester City School District for the two thousand and eighteen-nineteen school year. Accordingly, a tuition agreement needs to be approved to allow the payment of tuition to the Rochester City School District. A copy of the tuition agreement is attached. May I have a motion in a second and be it resolved that the Board of Education authorize? Wait, do I, do we vote first and then I read that? Or do I just keep going here? I'm uncertain about this.
I think it's just, I think the signature, the move by second applies, just not by.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you. So resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to sign any necessary tuition agreement with the Rochester City School District as described above, and further authorizes the payment of tuition for students attending through the urban suburban program. May I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments? Yes, Lisa?
I have a question.
Yes.
I had a, I was a little confused, and Mark wrote a very nice explanation, which I read three times, and I'm still not sure I quite get. So can you just explain it to me?
Sure, sure.
I'm just, I was trying to wrap my head around it, and I was like, I think I get it, but I'm not sure.
Right. So the way the funding, the state aid for the urban suburban program works, when students from the city school district come here, is New York State provides aid to us based on the difference in, in the state aid that the city gets and the state aid that, Penfield. gets. And if you think about that, because most state aid is wealth-based, the city school district gets a lot more than we do, so we get that difference. The payment flows to us. If, when a student goes the other way, that system can't work in reverse because our state aid is lower, the difference would be a negative number. So, so in that case, the urban suburban programs agreed that we would use the non-resident tuition formula. So non-resident tuition takes the, the costs in the city school district, subtracts the state aid they receive, and that we would essentially pay tuition for those students. It hasn't come up before because I think this will be the first time.
We've never done it, right. I'm still, I'm still not sure I get it. So we get an aid based on per pupil.
Correct.
Like, no matter what. So...
Right, so does the city school district.
Right, and theirs is higher.
Right.
Which I get that. So the state is, when we have a student coming from a, from the city, the state...
Gives us the difference.
The difference between what?
Their aid and our aid.
So we get more?
Right.
Oh, okay, that's where I was losing the whole thing.
That's sort of how the payment works when they come this way.
Okay.
Right, but that math won't work when they go the other way.
I get it now, okay, thank you. I was thinking that we were getting our aid when they come, like, we just get the, like, if my, we have another kid in the district.
Well, we get, we also get our aid as well. I mean, it's, it's a double benefit in that regard.
Right, I get it, thank you.
We get the difference, plus they count in our counts, and so whatever aid numbers, you know, however that works through the formulas, we would get that advantage.
That makes sense, thank you.
You're not the only one who's off with that. So we get, I was, I figured I was going to work that, but that's not, it's not equivalent to a tuition.
Correct.
Okay. It's just, it's just, we, we do that, we get a little bit more money, but it's part of a, an overall community benefit.
Oh, absolutely. I mean, the state's, the state has had that formula unique to the Rochester area every year in the state aid runs, if you will, unique to the Rochester area, is support for the urban suburban program. They've, they've maintained that commitment for, I think, for as long as the program's been in existence.
Yeah, and just as a reminder, the urban suburban program, the official term is the urban suburban inter-district transfer program. When it first started back in the 60s, it was a two-way street, much more so. Over time, it's changed. This is the only suburban student out of 16 suburban school districts in urban suburban going from the suburbs to the city. So Penfield's, it's really, it's neat, it's exciting, there's all, you know, so there's, it's, it's an interesting piece. And so they're continuing to build that, and what I would tell you is that, you know, when the program started, because of the aid flows, the suburban districts may receive a little more aid, but that's not why Penfield back in the 60s got involved in it, nor why we're in it now. It's really about that benefit to, and I always stand up, that it's the benefit for students coming from Rochester City, but it's also the benefit for Penfield students to, to see increased diversity in, in their classrooms and in their buildings, so. And we always say with our urban suburban students, we don't run data any differently. Once they start in Penfield, they're a Penfield patriot, and, and that's how we, we take a look at it, so. Does that make sense with the number stuff?
Yes, it took me a minute. I was like, I'm reading it, and I'm like, I don't get it.
And we've never, in this time, we've never had to approve it like the other way because it's just been, it's been in existence forever. I would imagine some board a long time ago approved something, and, you know, that's where, how it works.
Yeah, just is how it works now.
Yep.
All right, we have the motion on the table and the second. All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. All right, the district is contracting with Sylvan Learning Center to provide supplemental educational services on behalf of Our Lady of Mercy. The contract is not to exceed $24,578.80 and will be paid through Title I funding. Students will receive Sylvan services at Our Lady of Mercy and at the Sylvan retail locations. The program includes diagnostic assessments, guided instruction, and progress updates that will be available to parents, teachers, and the Our Lady of Mercy administration. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent of schools to enter into a contract with Sylvan Learning Center on behalf of Our Lady of Mercy?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you.
We did that last year.
All right. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approve the 2019-2020 budget goals, assumptions, and guidelines presented above and at the board meeting of November 6, 2018?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you. Textbook, PHS textbook approval. Hold on here. Let's see. Okay, I'm sorry, lost my place here. May I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approve the above recommended textbook, textbooks as presented on November 6, 2018, if you recall the presentation that was here last time? I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
Any questions or comments? Lisa?
I love this district, I really do. I love that we bring really relevant topics into our classrooms, that we talk about the hard-to-talk-about pieces. At this point, I'm just feeling a little bit, I need a little bit more time on some of these books. And I was just, I wanted to have a little bit of discussion about it, but I know we're missing some people, so I don't know what other people are thinking. I would like to give a motion to maybe postpone to our next meeting. I tried to take out The Hate U Give from the library, it's very popular, so I couldn't get my hands on a copy of it.
Just remember, there's also a book at district office and at the Penfield library because it's one of the ones that, that's what happens with every book that gets reviewed.
Was it at the library? Because I tried to go and take it out, and it was, it was, like, they were gone.
Yep, our, our copy is there.
Oh, your copy is there.
Every, every textbook that gets presented gets left there.
Can I take it home?
Or you could, I'm sure the one at district office...
And read it?
Probably the one at district office.
Yeah.
But the ones that are...
The one at the library, they're probably instructed not to let anyone take it.
Am I allowed to steal it out of the library?
Okay, Mark, you had a comment, question?
I just wanted to ask if we had gotten any public comment on these since books.
No public comment on the books, except for students who are very excited to read The Hate U Give. Many of our students have already read The Hate U Give. It is, as Lisa found, out of the public library because it's a very popular book, made into a motion picture, getting rave reviews, winning awards, so the only thing I've heard from is the Mosaics class who's very excited to, to have it as part of their, their read. It was a conversation, it came up a lot at the Rock to Change event because it's a book being read in many districts across the area, and so that'd be the only feedback, no other feedback from parents or community.
So we're not the only district looking at this book?
Oh, no, no.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to vote to approve these books, and...
So do I need to do a, a motion to table?
Well, we have, no, a motion to amend.
Well, there's, there's two. You can do, you can do an emotion to postpone for, for further review. It would be postponed definitely, and so you could say, if we do, I have Robert's Rule of Order, which I need my cheat sheets. Sharon's usually here, she's got a master.
I know, I was trying to remember.
And Dr. Sanzoussi's my other go-to for Robert's Rule of Order. But it's basically, you, you could move to postpone the, the question until the following board meeting.
Right, yeah.
And then that would be voted on here. That motion would have to be voted on whether people want to move it to the next board meeting.
Right, we would have to have approval from everybody to move it to the next board meeting.
Yep.
Right.
We do have, you know, if we move all the books to the next board meeting, many of these are for next semester, so that does push us to December. I would turn to Jim, I didn't get a chance to ask him ahead of time in terms of purchasing if...
It tightens the window. You know, they were looking at, the team really wanted more time to come and present to the board, so they weren't as rushed. It just makes it a little tighter to make sure we have the resources in place. I think we, we might be okay, but I can't obviously guarantee it. That's why we, we went and presented early so that we would hopefully have your approval at this meeting, and then be able to place the order and get shipments in and...
So that they're here on time, right?
They're here and able to be, you know, put through the process and ready to go, so...
Well, and is there any comment on Lisa's proposed amendment? Because I feel that there, there was enough time to read it and to, you know, I know you tried to find it at the library, but there's, there's Kindle and there's Amazon, and, you know, it was here, and, and I'm a little uncomfortable looking for extra time to read a book before we approve it. There's a lot of books that come to our, you know, through our, for, come recommended for our approval, and I don't feel it's a good precedent to have to stop and read books before we approve it. However, if you want to, you can, and there's usually two weeks between meetings so that we can have the time to assess it and approve it if we want to, or disapprove it if we, we want to. But in this case, we've had three weeks, and I feel like we have a time, a little bit of a time crunch that I'm a little nervous about stretching it right to that. So I think the first thing we have to do then, if I understand Robert's Rules, is finish this discussion about the, about Lisa's proposal, and then vote on that as to whether or not to extend it to the next meeting. Am I correct in that?
This is fun. So Robert's Rule of Order, so, so it would be that anybody on the board, once a motion's made, and now the board's discussing it, then any board member could say, you know, to the president, I move to, in this case would be, I move to postpone the vote until the following board meeting.
Which I think is what...
Then that would need a first and a second, and then...
Right, that's what, that's what I tried to say.
So if we want to do that, that would...
So I would say I did...
So you would say, I, I move to postpone.
Postpone, not table.
Right, right.
Postpone the question until the following...
Because you want time to read the book.
Yep.
I move to postpone the vote on the books until our next meeting in December.
Okay, so there's the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll, I'll second as we get going.
Okay, so any other discussion about it? Barb?
Yes. My thought is this, that staff has put forth this list, and it's part of the curriculum. I don't see an issue with, my trust is with the staff as to why they chose these books.
Okay. Anybody else?
I'm not a voting member.
Right.
But I would just share that, you know, because we're publicly talking about books, is there are a number of books we have that come up in, in regards to controversy, right? And so I would say that The Hate U Give is one that is a relevant topic that's, that we're dealing with. It does involve, it does involve a, a young African-American teenager living between two worlds, living in the city and going to school in a wealthy suburban white district. Similar to that, many of our students who attend Penfield are, are living that. I think it's, it's really important to note to the board and also for the community is that anytime, one of the reasons that you meant you started with, I love Penfield because of the choices, and I think it's really great that we have such amazing, really thorough reading lists. But as a reminder for any parent or student, if they're uncomfortable reading a book, there's never a forced piece in terms of at the high school that you have to read this text. So whenever there's a concern, and we have that every year, there's at least a few that for many different reasons, whether it be a religious reason, an ethical reason, just a feeling that we have parents not wanting their children to read a certain book, or students saying, I'm not comfortable reading that book, and there'll always be another book and another opportunity to do an activity, not, not go away and read something else, but they'll have an, an interactive opportunity to read a different book on the same type of theme. So I always, I always like, that's one of the other reasons I really love the Penfield piece, because while there are some books that may be considered controversial, there's always an opportunity, no one's ever forced to read the book, they have that opportunity. So I don't know if that's one of your concerns, is that someone will have to read something that they are worrisome about. But I, I'm not a voting member, but I just add that in.
Okay, thank you. Mark?
Yeah, I was, I guess, as the board, we're responsible to make sure that what we have is appropriate for the students. That doesn't necessarily mean that I'm the, the best arbitrator, that was appropriate for the students. How, and I mean, I applaud, applaud Lisa for, you know, really working hard to try to read, to find the book to read it. I can't say that I did that because, again, if I read that book, I'm not sure if I would be the best person to say that's appropriate for students. So, so, but nonetheless, I mean, that's, she's doing, she's doing her due diligence. I think because I'm not the, the appropriate arbitrator, I have to lean on a couple of things. Did we have public comment, the recommendation, the fact that it's in other school districts, and the information you provided about how different independent groups that judge appropriateness for students had said it was okay? So because of that, I don't feel compelled to read it independently.
And plus, parents have such a say in what their children are going to be, and their students are going to be exposed to, so, okay?
So I think because of that, that my personal need to read it is, is not there.
Right, I understand. Phil, everyone's got something to say. Did you want to contribute? No, I mean, we haven't done this before, so I just wanted to know if there's anything you wanted to contribute to the conversation.
Just that in my, as I was looking at this and researching, and I didn't, I looked through some notes and talked with people I knew, but I kind of knew the answers I was going to get because who I was asking. That being said, I didn't really find too much of it. I searched for like kind of a dissenting opinion and didn't find a lot of it. I've kind of looking for it almost. But that being said, the people who are making the decision with the books, and it is timely, and I've even seen, there's a great show right now that kind of speaks to this, it's on Starz, I can't remember what it's called. But it's about a, a school in Chicago facing the very similar, it's the exact same situation. It's almost like a case study. So I think considering all those things, that I, I would leave it to the staff, and who knows the culture of the school and the district of this.
Okay, so on Lisa's motion, we have her motion. Mark, you seconded it.
Can I just make a comment?
Sure.
I just want to make sure that people don't misunderstand what my intent is because I think the book is great from the reviews I read. I think my concern is, when I looked at Common Sense Media, it was all over the place. There were parents that said 11-year-olds, there were parents that said, no, not 15, 16, there's sex, there's drugs, there's violence, and I thought, well, what does that mean? Sometimes a reference is very appropriate for a 14-year-old, and sometimes it's not. And I felt the really need to go, I don't really know about this, I need more information. So I guess that's sort of where my brain is. It's not, I'm opposed to the book, or I didn't really find any, anything that said it was terrible. I thought, do we want our youngest high school students reading this book? I can't say yes or no because I don't really know. I guess that's where I was feeling, so...
Yep.
That's, I think it's, you know, one of the, one of the pieces for a board, I would just tell you, in my role is, I make recommendations, and it is the board's role to, to make those approvals. So I, we're just kudos to Mark as well for giving you kudos, that this is an opportunity to, it makes it messy, right, to have these conversations, but it's part of the process to go through.
Okay, so we'll vote on Lisa's motion. So we will be voting to approve...
To postpone, to postpone until the following board meeting.
Okay, so you've made a motion to postpone, Mark seconded it, let's vote on that. So all those who are in favor of postponing can raise their hand, okay? All those opposed to postponing. Okay, so it's one to postpone and four to not postpone. So the motion does not appear. Motion is denied.
And then it goes back to the original motion.
Okay, so now we go back to, may I have a motion and a second that the Board of...
We already had a...
You already had the motion and second, yes, just to vote, yep.
See? Thank you, everybody, for chiming in and correcting me all at once. Appreciate it.
I think we're all learning, this is Robert's Rule of Order, like, like, practice, right?
See, yeah, and Team Penfield just like spills into the board, right?
Okay, so now, all those in favor? And anyone opposed?
I'm going to abstain. I'm going to abstain.
Okay, none opposed, one abstention. All right. Thank you. And I appreciate that very informative and respectful conversation there. All right. Committee meetings. Oh my gosh, well, I don't know, Mark, you want to take legislative? Do you want to give a little recap on our legislative meeting from last time? I don't think I should.
I don't think we've had a meeting since our last...
Were we...have we been here since our last one?
I think we have, yeah.
Okay, so we don't have to recap that again? Okay, and...
I will just say that, yes, we haven't had...we have had a legislative committee meeting since our last board meeting. We do have them coming up next week.
It's next week, right.
And the week of the...on the 10th, there will be Monroe County School Board Association trip to Albany, our December trip to Albany, which is...we don't meet as many of the representatives, but we do get to meet their staff, which is important for information transfer, to tell them things that are important to us, and we get to meet with the SED to kind of get a sense of budgeting and what's going on. So that will be coming up on the 10th.
Okay, I guess we need to let Sharon know about that, so if you're going, I guess we can tell...
Some people have already, but if you haven't let her know already, just please send her an email and copy me in.
Okay.
Be great.
All right, good.
I know, the people who have already emailed were good.
All right. Now, there was an info exchange meeting on the 14th. It looked...okay, I don't think anyone's here to fill us in.
I was there.
Do you want to...so anything?
Oh, so was Nancy.
Do either one of you want to fill us in?
Nancy, you can correct me if I'm wrong. It was around...oh, gosh, just before "A Lot of Turkey." It was around social media.
Social media crisis and criticism. How do you handle that? It was from the...it was an attorney who spoke, so it was more the legal perspective of libel, slander, those types of issues.
Oh, okay.
Well, I think one of the pieces that people found interesting is, as an elected board member, when it comes to, and I won't try to quote the attorney, but as an elected official, there's very less...there's very few protections around slander because you're an elected official. So like, you know, I can go out and say things, correct me if I'm wrong, around like elected politicians, board members are elected politicians, so it's really tough to prove sort of that slander piece towards a board member, which was interesting because you're not necessarily a private citizen, you're an elected board member. So the rules are a little bit different. That being said, so are superintendents because they are sort of running the district. I'm not really a private citizen when it comes to that, and if people put things out, as long as they're not putting it out purposely to be false, but they think it's true. So if somebody posts something on Facebook about me or about a board member, as long as it's not completely based in falseness, in falseness, that's not a word, they...you have...there's a lot more wiggle room when it comes to elected officials and superintendents of school districts.
Wow.
Is that fair? So it was interesting.
Yeah, that is interesting.
And the notes, I know Mr. Otten, he already put the notes out, so you can take a look there.
Yeah.
Thank goodness Nancy was here this evening. Thank you, Nancy.
All right. No unfinished business, no new business?
People are making stuff about me and Ron.
All right. I have a...
I hope it's true.
Let's see. Okay, well, before we close the meeting, let me just state that we have our...oh, policy.
So, yeah, so Policy Committee is going to get an email from me shortly after this meeting that we need to either reschedule or...we have another Policy Committee, I believe, December 13th, so I look at...I'm looking at Lisa and Catherine, we either have to look to reschedule, or I'm unable to attend Policy Committee on the 29th.
Okay, so that would mean that Policy Committee is not meeting this Thursday?
Yep.
But we will either reschedule or just wait until the next December meeting?
And I've got two of you here, so would we like to reschedule that, try to get one more in between the 13th of December, or are you comfortable waiting until the 13th of December for Policy Committee? I can...
I don't either, and so I think we need to just check that out, and then we can decide.
Perfect.
I think that'll be fine.
Thank you.
And then our next Board of Education meeting is on December 11th. All right. May I have a motion in a second that the meeting be adjourned at...oh, geez.
Eight thirty-five.
Eight thirty-five PM.
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? None opposed, thank you.
Thank you.